Welcome, citizens of Clay County. Want to take this opportunity to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to attend today's school board meeting. And I think all of us are very familiar with each other. So, I just want to ask that all of you take a moment at some point today, this morning, whatever, to introduce yourself to Mrs. Clark. Since she was new with us the last school board meeting, she really didn't have a chance to get into the audience and meet everyone. So, when you do, I don't think we need to take a minute now to go around the room, so to say, but at some point this morning, I'd appreciate it if you just introduce yourselves, tell her what you do, and help her feel welcome. Thank you. Mr. Borowski, it's all yours.
I'm David Borowski, superintendent. Nice to meet you. Well, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, everybody is thankful for the many blessings in their lives, and we're ready to go today. We've got three different items here this morning. So, the first one is the board agenda for the 10th meeting. The very first item is the minutes from the workshop on October 27th, discipline hearings and November 5th and the 17th. All of those meeting minutes are number one on the agenda. Number two, the revised 2021-22 student calendar and the proposed 2223 calendar. Some of the highlights would be, there was a typo on 2122, originally the planning day is not 10/8, but is 10/18. So, that's really the difference with the change that you see there on that particular calendar. And Friday, October 15th is the end of the nine weeks on that calendar, not Thursday. So, the dates of Thursday and Friday, the number or date was different than the day of the week. So, that's the reason for the change on the 2122, and then you can see the 2223 calendar.
Have these already come to us for changes because of clerical errors in it?
I don't, no.
This one?
Yeah, I thought it was last year's.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I'll have to double check.
I'm pretty certain that we've seen the calendar come because of-
I'm not sure if we saw the 2122.
-dramatical errors in it, so let's just be a little more careful so we're not-
Okay. So, number three then is the employee work calendar for 2122. Number four is the change in the minimum wage to 865, starting January 1st. That's why those pages of the document are there, to represent that change from 856 to 865, which you can see on the attachment.
Back to the employee work calendar, were there any changes made to that?
No.
No.
So, number five, the personnel consent agenda. The personnel consent agenda is large. I would point out to you that there's many job descriptions. In fact, the whole operations department is in there. You know, as a result of OPAGA, those job descriptions are supposed to be rewritten every two years. Some were close, because we had done a whole batch of them before.
Yeah.
But some weren't, so now we have them all up to date there. There's nothing, there's no financial impact at all or anything to that, so you can leave those over.
So, does this, and this brings us up to date for now, and we wouldn't do this again for another two years?
Correct, when it comes to those that are in operations, which is critical for legal to have sent.
I have a question, actually on the, some of the appointments. And I brought this up once before, I think it was actually a police officer that was doing a supplemental, had a supplement position. And this is a, I noticed on here, there's a teacher that's at an elementary school, but he's supplemented for several things at the high school. And I just want to make sure that his instructional time is not, that it's, he's responsible to the elementary school, because their hours are very different than the high schools, obviously.
Yeah, they can't skirt the instructional time in order to do that. They have a supplement.
Exactly. And so, I just, I did talk to the A.D., and in most cases, they've worked that out. So, I just want to make sure that we caution those people that, you know, your instructional time, it's your primary job, so that's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Row number six, which is the K-12 academic services out-of-state overnight student travel. And you can see a whole list of things that are there. I'll kind of point out, especially since we have new board members, that sometimes one issue in the past is the dates of them. Some of those events, you would not know until after the competition occurs. So, for example, on this list, you may notice that golf, why is there an item for 11-2, and 11-2 is already passed? It's because they wouldn't know that they're going to the state tournament until after they play, which has already passed the previous meeting. So, that's how that works. Typically, we do a pretty good job of staying on it. Number seven, revision to the daily hours of teachers and students. These were updates to them in order to ensure compliance, to make sure that those items, particularly when it came to PLC times, wasn't issued. So, now they should be all up to date and correct.
And that's been with you as well?
With Ms. Kidler.
Thank you.
Professional learning catalog. This is additional changes to the professional learning catalog. Particularly, there was really only a couple of changes. There's a summary sheet, third page in, that kind of gives you a brief paragraph on what the changes are. Update or change the parent supervisor, which will change the board member's name on that document. The NEFAC, Level 2 Certification for Principals, exactly 180 hours, not 120 hours, which was the previous program. The title of ASD, there's a change to that. And also, a reading program that allows teachers to get their Reading Comp C1 and Reading Comp C2 within the same course, which is very positive for teachers. So, that's a feel-good moment there.
I'd like to just say thank you for the summary page. When you guys update these handbooks and-
Especially the very-
It really is helpful to know where the changes to be.
See that? We were talking about that! I said, "Hey, we need a summary page."
You know, otherwise, we'd read through and look for every line that's crossed out or highlighted in red. And this is, it's much easier for us to know, you know, what you're changing and why. So, thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. We're up to number nine, which is the In-Service Education School Board Policy 4.46, which actually, this is a very positive thing, in which the time that teachers put in for in-service used to be a jet that had three hours in order to count it. This would make a change to allow every hour to count. And, you know, just to kind of be transparent, I think what's happened is, as technology has grown and these things have become more automated, it became easier to implement one-hour increments of professional development. So, we view this as very positive for teachers and our employees to get credit for every hour of in-service. And this is the advertisement for this month, and then you'll see it again on discussion next, next month.
Mr. Borowski, that was a state policy, correct? Not a local policy?
That was, that was in board policy.
That was a board policy.
Yeah. So, the next one is number 10, which is our resident clinical faculty, our MOU with UNF. We have two of these individuals that work for the district in placing interns. We place interns mainly at Grove Park, Orange Park Junior, Orange Park High School, which are our clinical schools. However, interns do go to other schools, and this is a renewal of that contract. The district pays half, and UNF pays half for those two individuals. That used to be called sprint teachers back in the, back in the day.
Did we used to have more than that?
No, for my, to my knowledge, it's always been two.
It's such a great program, I don't know why we're gonna have more.
Yeah, I mean, one of the great challenges is providing professional development support to people, especially when they're new. And we are seeing people that enter the teaching profession that don't go through professional teaching programs at the college level, which means the need for support is even greater, you know, in today's current climate. Okay, Rod.
And these are the two people that work with us, with, work through the district?
Right.
So, that, it, we said it would be nice to have more, the really, the additional people actually come in from UNF to do observations and things as well, so.
Yeah, it's a great program.
The number 11 is the Skill Bridge Participation Agreement with the Navy. This is for an individual to basically do an internship, you know, free of charge to the district, but the Navy has their own separate contract or way of contracting For number 12, it's the proposed allocation changes. You can see that there are a few changes, and most of them are reductions. I'll kind of point out to the board that you will see more changes coming forward. If you remember, right now, we're at an interim spot where we surveyed our parents, and we're in the process now of analyzing that data. We'll go ahead and we'll make that movement back. There's at least 3,600 students coming back-
Coming back?
-to brick and mortar.
Are they coming back from OneClay or from CBA?
Let's see, from the people who were surveyed and responded, 2,400 coming back from OneClay Online, almost 966 coming back from CBA to brick and mortar.
Wow.
Okay, so, we're, what we're seeing is our parents are saying, "We want our students to come back physically." Now, yesterday, you know, the governor had an executive order, or the commissioner had an executive order relative to that, and that number might actually grow, because part of the executive order was if a student is not making progress monitoring, not doing well, we have to affirmatively reach out to that student and those parents. The parent could opt to still keep them in the virtual setting, but there has to be this additional step in the process to make sure that the parent knows the student is not doing well, and then, are they choosing to still keep them there regardless? Sometimes, the students that have chosen that type of, of learning should be in a in-person environment. And so, those conversations, that communication, all of that will need to occur between now and the break. The readjustment of allocations, which was the original, should occur at that time. We'll reach back out to our parents with an updated schedule, because there could be some changes that occur by the 11th. The first day of the second semester is the 20th. So, that's kind of the timeline. We're in good shape. I always get a little panicky whenever I hear an executive order is going to come out, because you're never quite sure, but this was actually a very good one, very positive for our district, our students.
Is Dr. Leguoco smiling over there? That 900 students are coming back from CBA at least?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Do we, do we have a, not a breakdown per se, but an idea as to, of those 3,000 students, are the majority of them upper level, like junior high, high school, or are the majority of them like K through?
I can, I can certainly, we could tabulate that in the next couple of days.
It's a good question.
And, and the reason, I mean, when you're looking at states like New York, and the city, that's saying, "Okay, we want our younger kids to go to school, but we want our older kids to stay home." I'm just curious if that, you know, sort of rolls out the same way by personal choice by some of our families, so.
So, one of the great challenges and the reason why we started so early with surveying parents, even though we realize the environment changes all the time, is that we wanted to have the opportunity to reach out to those parents that didn't respond. So, we had about 28,000 out of 40,000 physically respond by pressing the button on the computer. That still leaves, you know, you know, give 12,000, my math's good, relative to that. So, now you have to reach out to those individuals. And, and in defense, I think that some people that were happy where they were figured I would do nothing. I don't want to press any buttons, because if I press any button, something might happen, right? So, they kind of hung back. But then, we have to affirmatively go and communicate with them. So, it, it, it's a long process. And then, of course, the whole purpose of that conversation was to say that allocations will change as a result of that. If you're moving, you know, 4,000 students from one mode of learning to another, you're, you're moving people also, employees with that also, so.
And have you, has there been any pushback from employees not wanting to?
Not, not yet, because it's really going to take almost till Christmas time in order to, to determine where. And then, of course, we'll work collaboratively with CCA on the issue to ensure that it's done by contract and then move forward, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're on, we're on 13, the monthly financial reports for October. 14 is the deletion of certain items report.
Ms. Clark, this is always a fun list to look at.
I love it.
To see what's still hanging out there.
It's especially interesting when you see that school buses are up for sale. The first time I saw that, it was in, what is Robert, Robert Johnson had it listed on a website for sale. I was like, "Oh, my goodness." It was like, "It's gonna sell, you watch."
Okay, we're on 15, which is the bid awarded for covered walkways. It's a district-wide bid. For number 16 is a, is a bid awarded for athletic field maintenance.
I have a couple of questions on that. First of all, it looked like it was only secondary, is that correct? Because I know we've had a concern about the spraying of, of an elementary school recently, so, so this is strictly secondary, right?
This is secondary, yes.
And who was doing it prior to now? I mean, who's been doing this?
I'm not sure of the company name, right?
So, we've had a company, not the-
The individual schools were doing it, right?
Yeah, the athletic directors, correct?
So, it's not out to a company right now?
No. No, that's what this bid is for.
No, but I'm, so the individual schools are doing it currently?
Yeah, and they would hire somebody to do it.
Right. The company, the company, the schools hired the companies, and there was no RFP out there, and so, the RFP was done to make certain that the companies that had been hired are approved. And that's what this is for.
Well, so, we were prior, we were approaching the bid limit-
Right.
-on the amount over all the schools, is the $50,000 limit. So, we said, "Wait a minute, we need to have a formal RFP to award this."
Because I spoke to an athletic director this morning, and a lot of these items at this particular school, that they actually still do themselves. So, my concern is, okay, what if they don't, I mean, the 50,000 is that, I mean, you know, what if they're not using them, that service?
They don't have to.
But we still have to pay.
Is this the same company that does the maintenance on the front of the school?
No.
No.
The lawn maintenance?
It seems like fertilizing and-
This is just athletic fields.
Well, Bryce explained it too neatly.
That's what it was, it's fertilizing, yeah.
They do the fertilizing.
Like, for example, air rating is one of the items mentioned, and at this particular school, purchase their own aerator, so they do their own aerator.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, so it's, it's usually a list of items that you can pick from, from their services. And you don't, we don't have to pay them $50,000. We only pay for what we use.
Right. So, if they choose to, if they choose to use that vendor, they can. If they choose not to, then they can do it themselves. It's not, they're not-
Well, have they been used in this company before, or they just chose any company?
From my understanding, the schools had the opportunity to choose whoever they want to or do it themselves. Since then, we have, as the work got more increased, it became to that bid level where we had to now go out and do an RFP to secure a vendor or vendors that are, that meets the requirement for the school, for our school board policy.
So, I think it had a financial impact of 150,000?
Well, so, what was happening was all the schools, or a lot of them, were using the same company.
Right.
So, the amount to spend with that one company was approaching the 50,000.
Right.
So, we say, "We don't have to spend 150,000 on that project," but we say, "It might cost this much-"
Per year?
"-per the year." But we don't necessarily spend that much.
Can we afford that?
The schools, it's out of the schools' budgets.
It's out of the school's internal account?
Of what account?
So, it's a decision at the school level, as far as the service, I believe, it's, you know, the athletic directors and coordination between the principal, the athletic directors, and of course, you know, using their internal account funds, so.
So, it comes out of their internal accounts, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know when we've outsourced services, and of course, I know it's an unusual circumstance right now with Kelly Services, but, you know, right now, and of course, our grounds, as I've expressed to Bryce several times, and I'm not as happy with that as it, as it should be at some of the schools I've been to. So, I'm a little concerned when we start outsourcing those things that we make sure we get what we're paying for, so to speak. Thank you.
I didn't realize we were outsourcing. I thought that athletic directors were responsible for handling all of this. This is, it's like something new to me.
Well, so, and that's how they handle it, is they hire it out. Or some of them, it sounds like they do some of it themselves.
They do, because I know they, like I say, it just happened to have bumped into him this morning when I took some stuff to the high school. And he said, I asked him some questions, and he said-
We do need to be careful, because, you know, we're outsourcing the custod, the custodial down here at the county office, and we're outsourcing the lawn maintenance, and now this. But don't want to appear as if we're outsourcing, you know, certain employees are going to start to worry.
When we do RFPs, Ms. Clark, sometimes, I believe generally, there's a board member as an, as a member of the group that's doing the RFP, that's looking at the RFP originally. And I haven't-
Were you on it?
Yes, that's why I was speaking, because I had been on that particular committee. And there are a lot of schools, we're talking junior highs and senior highs, we're talking athletic funds. And these companies that are in this RFP, from my understanding from my recollection, were being used already. And the athletic funds pay for them, the athletic directors set that up. Are there things that certain coaches want to do themselves? Absolutely. But there comes a time when fertilizing a field or aerating a field is not necessarily the coaches or the athletic directors' choice to do. They might want to get out there and groom a mound, or make certain that that first baseline is just, you know, everything's, you know, just perfect that way. Or the marking of the football field, use that as an example. But for the actual maintenance of the grass that's underneath on that mound, or the, or in that field, that's, they have been using outside sources for quite a while. So, this was just coming back to saying, "Okay, we have to make certain that these are approved." And truly, I believe the two, there are two in here, if I'm not mistaken-
Yes.
-were being used already. So, it was just a, you know, "Let's do this and make certain that the costs are, we know what the costs are going to be." And truly, the coaches, as you were saying, Bryce, the, the coaches and the athletic directors go through, it's like a menu. We want, we want this, 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 and done, but we don't want that, that, that. And that's where that, 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 that gets done by them. So, yeah.
I guess the other question I have is, are we being locked into companies? Maybe they have another company?
No, these are the two that everybody was using already, if that makes sense. There are-
How many apply, how many companies apply to the RFP?
I'm not sure. Do you remember how many companies apply now, submitted, no?
I'm not, mm.
You only interviewed these two, or do you need any?
It's not an interview, it's based on price.
Three, I think, three.
There was only three?
Yeah, there were only three. But it was, and you're also looking at how complete is the RFP that is presented from the company? Then that's, there was some, I mean, it's, have you ever been in that process?
Several years.
Yeah, and that's, I think there were three that started, and these two are, like I said-
Just caution what you say.
Yeah. That's, that's all I-
And I think that something that's important to consider is, some of these services that are being provided by these companies require licenses.
Yes, yes.
These are controlled substances that they're using to spread on the fields for fertilization, for pest control, for all of the, all kinds of other things that we don't necessarily have. I think, how many pest control people do we have in the district? Is it one?
We had one.
One certified pest person that can do pest control in our district, so. Yeah, I, it's not, that is not something that our athletic directors are certified to do either. But also, full disclosure, AgroPro, one of the companies on this list, is owned and operated by my brother and my father, so I will not be voting on this item. So, it needs to be moved to the discussion agenda.
Okay.
Just remember, there's a form, like Form E, I believe you filled out. You can ask for, is it A or B? I think it's four or eight. Interesting.
Okay, I would say this, having worked at a couple of high schools, some athletic directors are very, very particular about which items they do and which item they allow other people to do. So, I'm just, I'm just saying.
It's really surprising, because they are so protective.
They are.
I'm surprised that they're allowing anybody to come in and do anything.
They're not allowed to step on the field.
Right.
Okay, we're up to number 17, which is the Oakley High School Hurricane retrofit agreement. Apparently, it's enhancing and reinforcing the windows in other parts of the gym for wind speed. Number 18 is the substantial completion of the district office building one, which is over there by food service. Number 19 is the pre-qualification of contractors. Number 20 is the people's gas easement at Orange Park High School. Number 21 is the educational five-year work plan. These are the items that are put into the state system.
This was really interesting. And I meant to call and ask if you could bring a copy of this for each of the board members. I don't know if you all want it, but I would like that, a hard copy of that.
Certainly.
Because I found it really interesting to see the layout of, you know, the timeframe of when we were doing things and, and, you know, just the whole process of it. I actually sat there reading this thing thinking, "I wanted to write notes," you know? It's like, but I'm glad to see, you know, we've got everything lined out of what we're going to do. And, you know, cafeteria is like, you know, Mont Clarity's their cafeteria, Bennett's cafeteria, and so, there's, there's a lot of things on here that I'm anxious for you to get started on.
I do have a question, too. I noticed, of course, one of the places on there was Keystone High Elementary Cafeteria, which obviously doesn't even, but my concern is if we're, in a couple of years, whenever we're going to do the revamp of that school, if that is still in the plan, then, then are we going to be undoing what we've just done, so to speak?
So, we can push, we can push these out, they don't have to stay, and just because it's here, doesn't mean we have to do it.
Well, I think as long as we knew that they were in line to have those, you know, the process done for those schools. I mean, I certainly wouldn't want them to wait forever, because that school definitely needs an expansion in the cafeteria. But I don't want to go and expand, and then, gosh, a year later, then we go and do the whole thing over-
Sure.
-and redo that money, so.
Right, so we, yeah, we plan for that. We plan to do that.
So, are we, do we still have it in our plan to make Keystone Elementary a junior high and build a new elementary?
Would like to, yes. So, this was actually completed before the half-cent sales tax passed.
Okay.
So, we were moving forward with this as if, you know, nothing was going to change. So, yes, now, next year, this will include the sales tax revenue in here, and we'll be able to show some more projects.
Do we have a timeline for when we expect that new school to fall in?
In Keystone?
In Keystone.
Yes.
Uh, we're probably looking at maybe six or seven years.
Six or seven years? That's way too long.
That is a long time.
So, how do we decide the priority? I know we have new growth, or we have new schools to accommodate the new growth coming in, especially in the neighborhood of Lake Asbury areas, but Keystone Junior, Senior, and Elementarys, you know, that's-
Forty-five years, I'm here reminding you.
Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah.
That's how long they've been waiting for a junior high, forty-five years.
And we do, we have a lot, we're, we're getting 13 and a half million dollars from the half-cent sales tax, which isn't, it sounds like a lot of money. It's, it's not a lot of money. It's an elementary school to build it, pay the architecture, pay for the land, outfit it, furniture, fixtures, equipment, 35 million dollars.
Right.
And I get that, but I'm, I'm talking-
My, yeah.
-a current existing place-
Oh, yeah.
-that we need to take care of, as opposed to-
Sure.
-sum anything in the future.
Sure, sure.
So, that's, I just, six or seven years is a long time. And I know that expansion probably won't last so long, but I mean, they, I mean, they need that before that time. So, that's why it's maybe to look at that.
Well, and there are other things we can do there to be creative. We don't know, there's not a whole lot of room where that cafeteria is-
No, I know there's not, eight acres.
-to expand out. I mean, we might be looking at, you know, doing something totally different there with the design, building a cafeteria somewhere else on that campus, in plans for it becoming a junior high. I mean, it's going to be like a step, a stepped process where we're going to have to do that. Because, I mean, just right now, you can't do anything with that cafeteria, expand it. You can maybe expand it five or 10 feet, but it's not worth it to do that.
Right, the little courtyard is very small, I know. Right, the little courtyard is very small, I know. I mean, that's really the only expansion area I see in.
So we, you know, have the plans of, hey, we want this to be a junior high, we could build a bigger cafeteria somewhere else on that property, do something with the library, move the library. I mean, we, we could do, you know, there's, there's a million things we could do. And we would hire an architect to help us with that. But that would be a step in the direction of moving the elementary school to the new property and then being prepared for the junior high there.
So what you're saying now is six to seven years is when that's all happening?
I mean, I don't want to, I mean, that would just be a, a plan right now. I don't want to set it in stone. I mean, it could be earlier or later. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to set myself up for a specific opening date.
We'll write this date down and on this date.
But it is on the plan. We, we definitely, I mean, we, we've been candid about that. We want, we want to do that in Keystone.
When we built Discovery Oaks Elementary, it's at twenty-three mil? Your budget is what, forty?
It was twenty, it was twenty point seven.
Okay. And you think it's gone up to thirty-five now? Don't we?
That, that was the construction cost. That was the construction cost. That didn't include FFAE, which is furniture, fixtures and equipment.
So the total came to thirty-five? Is that what you're saying?
Now, today's prices were, with inflation, were estimating thirty-five million.
Construction.
As, as a higher cost. I mean, it would be, you know, it could be less. Discovery Oaks was in a really great location, right here. Um, two ninety-five and the plants and deliveries. Um, right now, what we're looking at is, is Elementary R, which is out here at three fifteen, which is harder to get to, you know, there could be cost increases there. COVID costs, inflation, just general construction increase.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you covering all that morning.
Okay, we're up to discussion item one, which is the legislative agenda, legislative priorities.
Did you all receive the FSBA twenty twenty-one platform? Do you need a copy of this one if you don't have it? I need copies in case anyone would like them.
Terry, did you put this together?
We did have a cabinet.
Right, very good.
Very focused on funding.
You covered everything and we'll just cross our fingers and hope you're right.
Keep it to one page.
And it's a one-page, which is very important.
Okay, if there's no.
One page in bullets, that's the other thing, yeah.
So D two, there's no, um, human resource actions. And then D three is the public hearing for the SEP manual. And the revision page, there is a, a summary page there of the revisions. And I think that's it as far as the agenda.
Do we want to move into the discussion for, in, under your board, under the attorney comments? Let's transition to that now.
You have a second, the second part of this workshop, which I think is discussion and doing whatever you can work out with the, the.
So, so Madam Chair, if I could interrupt for a second. There's one additional item that's not here, but will be added, um, shortly, which is as a result of the executive order yesterday and last night and analyzing it, there's a brief revision plan. It's essentially four questions that districts have to complete prior to December fifteenth. So the plan is to add the item and then we'll add the final document prior to the forty-eight hour window. If I could have permission to do that, so that we can get that approved on the December tenth meeting. Okay, so there'll be one more item, I guess is what I'm trying to.
And that would be under discussion?
Yes.
Got it.
And that's it?
And we don't, and I was talking to Dr. Wiegand, just relating to the executive order, I was talking to Dr. Wiegand. Sort of still open financially, but you're meeting this tomorrow. With the other financial officers?
Yes, we have now. We have the finance meeting at the, um, Finance Council, where we will be going to more detail about this executive order. May be very, still vague at this time, so tomorrow, more detail.
When I read briefly through it, I thought, well, it looks like transportation is good, but we will, uh, see what's going on.
Ms. Ball, I've given a handout to everyone on the board and to the superintendent. Whenever you get into the second half of the meeting to discuss the oversight committee and the makeup and the construction event, uh, with regard to the half-cent sales tax, I would like about four or five minutes to speak to the superintendent.
Well, I believe we're in the second half of the meeting at this stage because we cannot work on the other item until ten thirty. After ten thirty, correct?
Correct.
Got it.
May I proceed?
Please.
Okay, what I've handed you, basically are some documents where you look at, that I want to go over briefly because there seems to be a lot of misconceptions and concerns about what this oversight committee is about. Who can do what? Who can be appointed? Who makes the appointments? What the appointees' duties are and what they can, what their limitations are. And so what I would like you to do, first of all, is if you look at what I've handed you, it's redlined because this is the one that went and actually was approved after the adoption of the changes, the amendments, to include charter schools. But if you look at page two, subsection H, it specifically says how the charter or the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee will come into being and what's necessary to get it. And it says, if you take out the modifiers, it says, "A citizens advisory committee consisting of Clay County citizens." That's important, Clay County citizens, shall be established and appointed pursuant procedures established by school board policy." I highlight that because the resolution is the pole star of this whole thing. This is what guides what you can do. This is what you decided on. The attachments are just that, they're attachments. Those are malleable to an extent, the fact that the, the, the plan, the plan is massagable. It can come and go and it was somebody's idea of what we needed to do. But this resolution is, is sort of like your guiding star. The second thing that's guiding is what went to the electors, what went to the voters. So the valid language is guiding. The reason that's important is because there have been, there, there's been discussion about having a resolution to bring to the board. You can't do that. There's been discussion about how you're going to proceed. Until you have a board policy, no one can proceed with this committee. It specifically says pursuant procedures established by school board policy. So what I'm going to suggest to you and what I think is accurate based on what's in the resolution and what's in the, the language that went to the voters is, first you have to construct a policy. And that is what I would like to come out of here at the end of this meeting today with, is my marching orders to create a policy. And what you need to understand before you get into that is the makeup of the committee is entirely up to you. It's up to this board. Whether it's two people from Keystone and two people from Fleming Island and two people from Clay Hill and two people from Harb, plus whatever else you want to do, it's up to you and it needs to be in the board policy that you're going to ask me to create. And that's what I do, is create the board policy. The second thing is, is the number. You know, there was something that went out, by accident actually, from, um, Ms. Ellis that showed seven people that would be part of this committee and they were from CCU, Clay Electric and all that. It's not limited to seven people, number one, and it's not limited to those people or even necessarily including any of those people, number two. There's also been concern, because if you looked at the next to the last page, as part of that plan, there was put in there that the oversight committee admitted says, "Seven-member, minimum, closed-princess group." And then defines professionals in relevant areas, review and validate headfirst expenditures. That is an idea that's part of the plan, but it's all massagable, it's all changeable. There's no limitation to seven members. There's no limitation to three members. There's no limitation to twenty members. It's entirely what you decide here today and give me orders and directions as to what to do. How they're found, who they're going to be, not who, but who is going to appoint them and things like that. So right now, it's an open book, completely available to do whatever you choose to do. As far as who appoints them, you could make the board appoint some and administrators appoint some. You could make the board appoint them all. You could technically allow administrators to appoint them all. I think that would be an unwise thing to do. As to far as the term of how long those people would be, actually, the duties themselves could be part of the, the, the policy. It's not going to be nailed down to, uh, who's going to do what. But whether they're completely advisory or whether they can make decisions, I can tell you that the resolution says, the purpose of which is to monitor and advise, not make decisions. They don't make decisions to tell you what to do. They don't tell Bryce what, okay, we, what, the next thing we want you to do is go build a so-and-so and add something. They don't do that. Monitor and advise. And I think that the way that people considered this initially was, everything you're doing is suspect. You're going to get thirteen and a half million dollars a year for thirty years and you've got six hundred million dollars in stuff that you got to build in thirty years. And so where is that money going to go? Where is it going? And is it going for new cars? Is it going for salaries? Is it going to raise superintendent's salary or my salary or other administrator's salaries? Or give me a bathroom in my building? But the whole purpose of it.
And that would be a capital project, so we couldn't go to that.
But the whole purpose of this advisory group is to oversee and so that everybody can look at it and they can report back to the community in some fashion, which needs to be set out as part of the policy, to let them know that nobody's sneaking around doing stuff with the money that's not in the statute, number one, and in the resolution, number two. Because the resolution reflects exactly what's in the statute. So those are the things that I think you need to look at today, and I'm happy to go over them as many times as we need to. The second thing is, is timing. Uh, the superintendent and I have discussed it and Bryce and I have discussed it. This starts collecting on January one. By the end of January one, we'll have five hundred dollars, maybe. But by the end of the year, we'll have thirteen and a half million, maybe, but that's what it projects out to. But nobody's going to see any money in January or February or March. It may be March or it may be April. And so what we have to do right now is create the policy, and the policy has to be advertised through the process that Bonnie knows so well and I know. And so in order to do that, we would probably need to have this on the board agenda for the February fourth meeting, for a public hearing. And if it's passed, at the same meeting, you could then pass a resolution if it was, if it was, if it was considered beforehand at, say, a workshop. But you could have other things associated with passing this policy on February fourth that would start to implement the things you need to do. That way, by the time the end of February, first part of March comes around, everything is in place. By the time people start looking at and seeing the money, there's somebody in place to oversee what's going on with the money. In the meantime, Bryce and her group and Mr. Fausa are going to be saying, this is what we're projecting for money. This is what we're projecting we need to do. They're not going to sit here and wait for advisory committee, they got stuff to do. We've got buildings that are falling down around us. And so I think that if we, if, if you see clearly, and that's all I'm trying to do, is to get the air cleared of all of the stuff that's going around, that everything here is a blank slate and it's up to the five of you to tell me what to do so that I can get it done and come back. And I would ask if we could, if we can get some, some progress here today. If we can't, I'm going to ask for another workshop. If we can, then I'm going to ask that you set another workshop with an action item on it toward the end of the month, before everybody goes somewhere for Christmas, home with the mask on, for Christmas. So that we can move to advertise it for the February board meeting, because we've got twenty-eight days and we can't do it on the, the January meeting because there will not be twenty-eight days.
Right, right.
And so we've got to have that time period in. So the timing is critical, but it's not drop-dead critical because nothing's happened. Nothing's going to happen for a while, not from the Department of Spending Money. But that's, that's the piece I had to say, is everything is in front of you. And if anybody says, well, we don't know what was passed, the last page on here is the item that was in the board minutes. The only discussion that came up on the whole thing was how is the money to be spent? And it was a four-one vote. So the resolution that's sitting before you was passed without change. So the, the language that's in here is governing what you need to do now. And my suggestion is that you need to break it down as to who's going to do what. How many, how many appointment opportunities does each board member have? And do you want to make it two citizens and one business community person or two citizens and one CCU employee or two citizens or however you want to do it? But give me direction so that I can get it done, because it will be done.
So in a nutshell, if I may.
Okay.
We need a policy, number one. And we need to, in essence, direct you to create this policy force.
There you go.
Number two, we are deciding, basically, we as a, as a board will need to decide how many citizens will be on this committee. I'll just keep calling it committee. Some are calling it, I mean, there are a variety of titles for it, but for this committee. In addition, I would also assume that we will say something about who from the district, maybe for instance, an ex-officio or directive member of this committee. And the reason I say that, somebody has to show the committee what we're doing. I mean, if it's someone from Bryce's office or whatever, area or whatever, to be able to present to the committee. I'm, I'm just sort of thinking what's going to happen in a meeting. The ideal would be if we could, in essence, say, no fewer than this number, but no more than this number? Do we want to go with a broad, I mean, I'm just throwing that out. And then, um, who would be, I mean, we've all received approach, approaches from varieties of people saying, put me on the committee, put me on the committee. And it's sort of like, oh, if, if we're thinking about the same people, that sort of defeats the purpose of broadening the committee to represent the entire community. I know that when Bryce first sent this out, you said, this is, this is just an idea. This is something that, yeah, this is not, this is not, this is, hey, whatever. I know in Duval County, I believe they're saying a twenty-four member committee and I'm thinking.
Twenty-two with two seven.
Too many people. But who knows? And the other, and as I'm thinking about this and as I looked at your list, Bryce, I was like, you know, we've tried citizen advisory committees with this group and it petered off to the wayside because we couldn't always get citizens. And our responsibility, as we set the foundation for this policy, is for the next thirty years. Now, policy can change in the future, of course, but if we're going to set this policy now, we want it to be a strong foundation. So.
I believe people are going to want to be on this committee.
There are going to be lots of people that want it now, but who knows fifteen years from now? That's why, that's why, and, and in looking at Bryce's list, my initial reaction was, well, you know, Clay Electric will pretty much always be here. And if it's not that company, it will be another company that bought them out, but they will be representing Clay County in our.
However, they have thirteen districts that they cover.
Well, I, but we have to communicate with them. We have to communicate.
Because it says a Clay County citizen, so they have thirteen districts that they cover.
And it would be, they have people who probably work predominantly in Clay County. We're looking at the.
But they need to live here, a citizen, not just work there.
But that's what we can establish in our policy as well. I mean, that can.
But I mean, that was in the, that was in the information.
That can be part of the policy, that if it's a representative from Clay Electric, it must be a citizen of Clay County. It's in the authority, the, whatever. I'm just saying, there are companies that are out there that are going to be here. They represent Clay County. And they're going to, and then what do we want to do as a board? I mean, I was looking at this going, well, that's seven, however, you know, there are other people, so.
I, I would have, and, um, over the last week, I looked up St. John, Alachua and Duval. Um, you're right, Duval's twenty-two people, two alter, they have, each board member chooses one individual of their choice. They have, you know, the NAACP, the teachers, um, their Duval County Teachers Union. They have, um, the builders, the realtors, and I have it here, the list goes on. I did speak with one of their board members and she said, you know, it's a lot and it's a lot of people and there's a lot of opinions. Uh, Alachua County is, is similar to what Bryce sent us. I believe each board member picks two and then they have representative. Alachua County is, is similar to what Bryce sent us. I believe each board member picks two, and then they have representatives from, um, the rest of their... And maybe each board member picks one, because they have twelve people on their committee. But St. John's was the one that, when we first started the sales tax, um, you know, reached out to St. John's and got lots of information from them. We, actually, our resolution is what their resolution was. We had to amend it because of the statute changing, and that's why, you know, it was changed. They have fifteen members with five alternates. Each board member chooses three, and then each board member chooses an alternate. They staggered their first year, so that half would go off as, you know, half would come on. It's a two-year or a three-year term for the first time, and then after that, just like our board, how, you know, that we always have some people there. I don't quite remember, and I, I have it here somewhere, if they had a, a criteria as to who. I believe St. John's picked, um, it three individuals with no breakdown. It didn't have to be, it just had to be someone who lived in the county. It didn't have to be a, a business partner, or a business owner, or a parent with children in school, um, and, you know, number one district in the county. So, I, I like what St. John's does. On pretty much everything they do, they really are a great, a great district, so. Fifteen members, each board member chose three with one alternate. And, and they had a breakdown of, you know, their, um, their citizen advisory committee does an annual report on, um, what, what they've done with their sales tax dollars for the year, and what has been spent on, and they keep their minutes, and they've got, you know, remaining in their term. They break it down, every annual report's broken down by there.
Which is similar to what we do with our village.
I'm sorry?
Which is similar to what we do with our village.
Right.
The one mil, which is similar to what you do every year, and making all of those reports available.
And so, I think, you know, the, the transparency and oversight is really there, so, um, you know, but again...
Does it say how often they meet? Just curious.
It did. I think they meet quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. Because I was thinking, and, and you need to correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't imagine that monthly would be efficient, number one. Number two, I, you know, yearly is not enough, but somewhere...
It couldn't even be twice a year, you know, um, depending on, you know, how much is going on. I know this first year, we're gonna be grateful that money's coming in, but there won't be a whole lot of construction unless we decided to bond out, and then there could be. But I would think the first year probably is gonna be a little slow. But once building and construction really starts, and that probably could be at the discretion of the committee, if they feel they need to meet more, then let them meet more. Any other comments?
Comments? Tina, the bullet point.
Well, I got this list too, and, um, obviously, I mean, there's some very credible people on here, but there's one problematic thing to me. There's nobody from the south end of the county that would be represented in this group, except for maybe the Clay Electric employee, maybe.
What other company, well, here again, depending, this is just amazing.
But I'm just saying, this was out of this group.
If you were to, if you were to select, and I guess, I like the idea of saying, you know, you're selecting one quote-unquote general citizen and one business from each of our districts. Right there, that's ten. And if the superintendent, that would be twelve. And, and, and the superintendent could sort of be an at-large sort of person. I'm, I'm looking at my district, okay, just using my district as an example. And I could zero in right away and say, well, you know, I would probably reach out to the Clay Utilities, because that's right in my district, and it's part of the, the infrastructure.
Do you see what I'm saying about this list?
Well, but that's, that's what I'm saying, you would be able to pick your district, your, your business.
But, but not according to this group?
Well, that's, that's just...
No, I know, I'm just saying that that...
That's just a suggestion.
That's what I'm saying, because if I created a list, it would just show the south end of the county, which would not be very good. And that's what this showed.
We were just taking what other people had done, and trying to get other community partners.
And like I say, these are very fine people, but they don't represent the whole county.
I'm not sure if we have the same, anyway.
What other districts did you reach out to, beside Alachua?
Orlando, Brabard, um, I had several, Alachua.
So, so what other districts are size, I mean, besides Alachua? Because like, anything in Orlando, Chicago, they're all so big.
California, this was a place for you guys to start. So, we just wanted to show you, these are the different types of things that we could do. I'm not, we didn't wanna sit here and say, this is what you should do. We said, this is a place to start. I wanna give you a framework, and then you can run from these. That's all.
Yeah, all right, very good.
What about, any other comments?
No, I think we each selected something on both on our district.
Okay, so, like, like...
To make sure the entire county is represented.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Like this business about just the superintendent and the board chair, I don't like that at all.
No.
I thought, no, 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 that doesn't, no, we need to be represented totally, in that respect. But, on the other hand, I really don't wanna get up to twenty-two people.
No, I don't think that's too many.
Unless, of course, you have so many people and so many alternates, and people can, you know, if the alternates choose to attend, okay, whatever.
You would need, I would think, if you're gonna have a group that size, you would need an attendance minimum in order for the group to meet. Which, I mean, we probably need to put that in place regardless.
I didn't hear you ask that, I'm sorry, did you repeat that?
We would need a minimum number of attendants for a meeting to take place.
Right.
I think, um...
A quorum.
Right, and I think, um, something to consider is when we're talking about putting business partners on this committee, obviously, there's a lot of contractors that we'll be working with as a school district in these construction projects. So, I don't know if you wanna limit which businesses, which kinds of businesses we're going, because to me, it would be like a conflict, if you put somebody from a construction firm on this committee.
It does say something like that in Alachua County's policy, that no school employee or company that contracts with the school district. So, it does create an issue if somebody were to come on the committee and then down the road do, uh, contract with us, so.
Well, if it's no school employee, then that would cut out CCA and, and also CCF.
Right.
And, uh, which, you know, in essence, that could make sense as well, because it is an advisory committee. It's not, they're not voting, they're not, you know, I...
Well, and I don't know if we really necessarily need people from Clay Utility, Clay Electric, because we don't want... I mean, we don't wanna bring an architect here, and he's gonna tell Bryce, well, I don't like the way you're building, I do it this way. This is a group that is just, their, their, their main focus is to make sure that the dollars are being spent as the resolution says, only on capital projects, only on improvements to the school district, any, because as per statute, it doesn't go to anything other than, you know, capital. It's just capital, it's not salaries, it's not, you know, anything else. So, this, this group, it's like, we don't go into school and tell the principal what to do.
Correct.
We are here to set policy and budget, and so, you know, we gotta stay in our lane. Well, the advisory committee is there to make sure that what we said this money's gonna be spent on is the only one it's spent on. Not, um, not the, you know, how it's being built, or how it's being repaired. So, I really think, you know, just from what I heard from, in the supermarket, you know, you go to Publix, and people stop you. It's the truth.
There is, there's an advantage to wearing a mask.
I know, you know, this still finds you, which I love. I mean, I, I think that the people feel comfortable to approach us, and I think that's important. But, um, I do think that, you know, if we were to each pick three from our district, then geographically, the county's covered. And, and maybe, maybe don't box it in to where it has to be a business partner, a parent, a community member, and just three concerned citizens. Because, you know, when we were doing that school advisory committee, we set a parent and a business partner. And I had so many people come to me and say, I don't have kids in school, and I don't own a business, but I'm concerned, and I can't sit on your committee. And so, maybe if we, I mean, I don't know how you feel. I personally, I would love to mirror what St. John's is doing, because they seem to get it right every time. I would like us to just choose three members from each of our district with no set, um, background, with three concerned citizens, whether it... And I personally would like to have, if it were me picking, I'd like a parent there. You know, I'd like the person who doesn't have kids in school, but doesn't own the business, but is, is out shopping, who pays those taxes, you know? So, um, you know, but I, I'm open to whatever the rest of you think.
Well, the other side of this is, they're not going to volunteer to do this if they're not concerned.
Right.
I would assume.
Right.
So, Ms. Clark, any comments?
Well, my suggestion would be two from our dis, well, two citizens. One has to be from our district. I don't think that we necessarily have to limit who we choose to our district. And I say that because I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. So, I've got a lot of people that are older in my district that don't necessarily want to be involved. And I've got a lot of younger people that don't have the time. So, I think if we, I think two is a good number with an alternate, meeting quarterly. But I see a lot of need upfront, because I think we've got a lot of ways that this money is gonna be chosen to be spent, that we need to narrow down. It's gonna take a lot of time, so.
I have to point out one thing. How the money's going to be spent has nothing to do with this committee.
Well, how it's, what, so you're saying...
The projects are entirely up to operations of the superintendent. They are an administrative function of the district.
So, what are they overseeing?
The committee would just be sitting here to say, okay, this is the money that came in. This is where it went. And it was projects that were capital projects, that were, come under the statute that governs this, rather than being spent on something that was frivolous, or something that was otherwise benefiting some other part of the district. But as far as any direction at all, as to where the money goes, on what projects, that is an operations function, it's a superintendent district function.
So, what are they overseeing?
The money spent on those things that are allowed under the statute. There are specific things, if you read the, the resolution, the very beginning of the resolution, it spells out what you can and can't spend the money on. And the resolution itself, and then when you go to exhibit one, it says, the money is spent on capital projects, with life expectancy of more than five years, and goes into detail about what those can be, okay? And so, they can't, it would not be up to the citizens advisory committee to say, okay, we don't think you ought to spend the money on that specific capital project. We want you to focus on this one over here. That's not what they're there for. They're there just to say, to, to, sort of like an auditor at the end of the public, to say, the money was spent on things that are allowed by the statute, and things that were set forth initially in the plan, and so it is legitimate. Because the biggest concern is, I think people's mistrust of the district is, we're giving you a big bunch of money, and we don't want the school board, or the school board or the district, spending it on things that just benefit personnel. It's not an operational expense fund. It is a capital expense fund. So, that's, that's how it, but they do not have anything other than advisory. They cannot direct.
I think advisory is the difficult part of the, it seems to me like a more appropriate title would be a citizens review committee.
Oh, they refer to it as oversight committee in the other districts, just an oversight committee.
Oversight or review, not giving advice.
Yeah, they're not advising really, they're, it's oversight, it's the check and balance.
Which we, do you have...
I go back to the resolution that was passed, and it says, monitor and advise.
Monitor and advise. So, what, what will they actually be advising?
They're advising the public and whoever else reads a report that the money's spent correctly.
So, we're really using them as a form of transparency to get out of...
Correct, absolutely.
And that's really their sole purpose.
Correct.
That was, that was an important feature that was put into the system, because people are saying, why, you just asked us for money for a village increase, and now what are we gonna, you know, we don't even know what that's being spent on. Well, this tells you what the money's being spent on.
And where is the wish list found that was made up at each of the...
It's in the Ed First Packet.
The Ed First Packet?
Which was approved by four.
And it's still online. It's online.
Because I think there was, I saw it quickly, and I think there were some items listed under salary, which can't be, so.
No, no salary.
No salary.
No salary increases.
I think if you look through, there, there's a couple that I saw that...
Cameras, exterior campus lighting, pavement markings, I mean, it's restrooms, it's, yeah. And then, and then, what I liked that you did with this is that it gives it to you by region as well. And they used the high schools as the regional areas, and all of the feeder schools then that went into that high school, and this is how it sort of spends out. But this was, when, this was first introduced to us, probably four years ago, three years ago. Dr. Kemp sort of started this, and he literally had a, a worksheet that was probably at least the size of this table, possibly half of a stetis.
Not long after he joined us.
Yes, and he said, oh, my gosh, do you see what's going, and, and he was looking seriously at the age of the schools. I mean, Keystone's forty-five, I remember doing the forty-year-old picture at W B Cherry when I was a teacher twenty years ago there. You know, Orange Park Elementary. I mean, there's so many schools that are old, but well-maintained. And there are a lot of maintenance issues in this. There are a lot of, I mean, we just approved a new HVAC system in one of the elementaries, was it, or junior high, for nine hundred thousand dollars?
Nine hundred thousand dollars?
And it just sort of gave me the chills, because the air conditioning man was coming to my house that afternoon, and I go, ah, no! Thankfully, it was just a hundred, but, but that's the sort of, you know, the plan, and when you say oversight, there are going to be things that happen that we may need to say, okay, the plan was to do this, 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 this. Well, this happened, so we're gonna bring this up. You know, I mean, it's like setting up an, an opportunity for these guys to say, this is our plan, this is where we're going with it, this is how we're meeting these options. I'm assuming the oversight committee could, i- in essence, look at you guys and say, you know, you've been working on this parking lot at Keystone Heights High School. Or, no, the, the ACE building. How many times did we improve the ACE building, and, and, oh, by the way, this was switched in the ACE building, and these lights were switched in the ACE building, and finally, it was done. But as these things happen, I mean, they're going to be, you know, things that you find that we need to do more quickly, or more expeditiously. So, that's the sort of...
The committee won't be advising Bryce on the change anything, because they don't see that pressure.
Yeah, but they can see, this is, this is what we are doing, this is what we did, this is why we did it, and this is where we're going with it. But the money is still going still to this list. It's, that's sort of, I'm grasping this, and if that's wrong, then yeah, make sure that we're not, yeah.
No, that's, that's...
So, I keep looking at Bryce over there, so, sorry.
It sounds like the intent of this group, from what the board's talking about, is that you want the district staff to make their presentation to this board quarterly, for the board to see the numbers, to see the projects, and then say, yep, that, that meets legal standards, and that would be sufficient for their meeting.
But that's what I'm hearing as well. At the same time, then, if they are making a presentation to, that we would obviously then get a copy of the minutes, perhaps, from that meeting?
That's what St. John's has. I saw in there.
For the school board, so that's part of our...
And their advisory, their oversight committee is videotaped, just like their board meetings, so people can go on and watch, and see what the conversation is. And so, it's really open to anybody who might be interested, even if they're not on that committee, that they can see the minutes, they can hear the meeting if they wanted to. And bring, you know, I, I don't remember, I didn't watch any of their meetings, I don't know if they did, like, citizens' questions or anything like that, but, um...
Now, Dr. Legueta, will this be accounted, similar to how you've done the one mil, where you keep it separate from all the other ones?
Yes, the, um, we're, my goal, well, I haven't said anything, but, um, the intent is really, um, once we've developed the projects and whatnot, we will go... I was gonna, um, set up a, a reporting requirement, similar to, and I know you've been looking at St. John's. And I'll, I'll tell you, Alachua is actually following St. John's.
Right.
You know, so the reporting, and the financial reporting of all of the expenditures, and, and all of the information pertaining to the projects were set up in a manner to where it is very transparent. So, yes, we will, I was actually going to follow that, that, um, reporting, um, format, um, that they've shared with me, so that I can set it up. So, it will be very clear, it will be very transparent. Every project will be identified and, um, aligned with their, the operations, um, you know. Every project will be identified and aligned with their, the operations, you know, plan.
So, if this is more of a review and oversight committee, then I would guess it really wouldn't be a conflict for somebody who's, say, in the field of construction to be on the board because they're not advising, they're not prioritizing any projects. It's strictly a, "Yep, that meets the legalities of it." So, I guess it wouldn't really.
Yeah, it does fall under.
Mr. Bickner, what do you think?
Only to the extent that credibility is gonna be an issue. Credibility is the issue to start with. Credibility from day one is, "What are you doing with our money?" And so, if you've got people in there that have an interest in what the money is doing because they are contractors or payers or whatever, as a, for instance, Valencore Paving, now Valencore Construction, always had a conflict of interest with anything that happened with the board because Carol's husband worked for Valencore Construction. And so, he could not, and none of those people could be associated with any kind of advisory committee because they had too many things going on that were, could be considered a conflict that made them an uncredible testimony.
And they would have advanced knowledge of projects coming up too. So, that's a consultant.
I think that that's the biggest, one of the primary things that makes it, and especially with what Ms. Wilk said, I think that's the primary reason, keep people that contract with or have the ability to contract with or likely contracting with the districts out of this system.
So, then the burden would be on the board member to find out who you're appointing where they work. So, should we, if we have candidates in mind, run them through your office to make sure that we don't, they're not employed by, or have a conflict?
How do you do the, yeah, the background, a background check on them?
There's something to figure out where they, where they might have a conflict or if they have a conflict or something. There's a whole.
So, should we look at, like, I didn't print up the policy for St. John's or even Duval's and Alachua said, "No school district employees or contractor, county contractors," I forget how it was worded. Should we look at the language of other districts as best practice and maybe work off of that?
Well, that's what I'm going to do. Now that you've mentioned St. John's, and I've already looked at Alachua's one time, but now that you've mentioned St. John's, I'll probably look at St. John's. I know that my friend is attorney for Brevard and I will look at what Brevard's doing.
So, could you ask them what their process is for vetting the community members to make sure that there isn't a conflict?
So, how does everybody feel about what St. John's is doing with, you know, each, each board member choosing three members?
And I'm not trying to, I've not seen St. John's. So, it's hard to say, oh, let's, you know.
And I know, so maybe what we should do is schedule another workshop.
Yes, yes.
And everybody go home and do your homework and, and maybe, Mr. Bickner, if you could get, you know, some of their policy stuff. I know your attorneys have this, you know, email system and, and send it to the board members so that you can compare, take notes and think about it.
Do you have a copy of St. John's?
I, I don't have their policy.
Okay.
I can get, you know, what I have, I can, I just went on their website and found it.
Does St. John's have a policy now?
I believe they did. They had a whole bunch of backup stuff, but I.
Well, they would have to have a policy.
I only printed up.
Not necessarily. I mean, we have to have a policy.
We have a policy, we have to have a policy because of what the resolution says.
Right, you don't have.
The resolution basically says something. Got it, got it, okay.
But maybe if you could, you know, we're kind of spitballing here, you know? And you're the expert in policy writing. If we give direction, you know, like Ms. Clark said, "Let's each appoint one from our district, one that's not from our district and one alternate." I mean, I like the idea of three from my district, but I'm, I'm willing to bend on that.
See, I'm referring only from our district, not himself.
Well, two plus one alternate is what you're saying, right?
Two with an alternate or three with an alternate?
I like two with one alternate, but I would prefer to do it from my district as well. And one of the reasons.
But I've had so many people from Oakley, from Fleming Island.
Well, they reach out to.
But that's where, that's where we share. I mean, you can, you can send me a note and say, "These people have indicated an interest from Oakley." They may not have contacted me.
What we could do, Mary, is like we did with that Citizens Advisory, let's come up with an application and staff can, they can all be sent to, Bryce, I'm just gonna throw it at you for a minute. You know, everything goes to Bryce. When she gets all the applications, she can send, you know, all District One to me, all District, or she can send all of them to all of us if anybody wants to see. And then, you know, Ms. Clark, if you have somebody you really would like to be on, Fleming Island, District One, Janice, would you look at this application? And we could do it that way. We want to be transparent and those people that really want to go, like, "Mr. Huffman sent me an email." Those people who really want to be involved, we want them involved. And so, you know, we could maybe, I don't know what would be on the application process. I don't remember what Ms. Dennis had put together for the Citizens Advisory that we did way back then or if we even need all of that. Mr. Bickner, maybe you have a better idea of, maybe it just needs to be vague, you know?
Whenever you, whenever we start talking about applications and submitting and go to here and sort them and send them back out and everybody look at them, now I'm sitting here thinking about time. That's my biggest concern is a time eater. So, I don't have a problem with an application process. What I have a concern with is, how do we get from here to there by February the 4th?
So, here's my concern. If we don't have an application process and I just say, "Okay, John, Sally and Bill," the community is gonna say, "Janice just appointed her friends." You know, Ashley, if you pick, you know, three people, they're gonna say, "Ms. Gillhausen just appointed her friends." It's not being transparent, we're just putting our friends on it. You know, we want to make sure that it's fair to all.
How does the county commission in Clay County, don't they have a, some sort of planning committee or?
Planning commission.
Yeah, and how do they make their appointments?
Board members, yeah.
The board and commission.
What, what do they make an appointment?
Is there an application process?
There is an application, so they're on the website and apply for. What committee is that?
The planning commission.
For the BCC?
BCC.
But then the BCC votes on it as well. And depending on, depending on, well, and the BCC, I mean, let's say we see one of your best friends on it and we decide, "I don't think she should have her best friend on that." I mean, we could vote that off.
And that happens on the county commission meeting.
Yes, it does.
It does, it did, yeah.
So, if we're going to vote on it, then there's no exchanging applicants between board members because we're voting on it. You know what I'm saying?
Well, as soon as we start voting on it, then we can't share it, which is, and that's, when you were talking, I was thinking you were gonna say something about the sunshine and I thought, well, you know, I mean.
I'm working on it.
It's frustrating because you do want other input. You want, you know, I would like to be able to say, "Ms. Clark, why are you so interested in this one person?" You know, and who knows? You know, that's.
And I'm only looking at the people, to be honest, like we've been saying, that are very involved with the business of the school board.
Right.
And I know we'll, it will help them to be more clear to all the citizens that they touch. And that's the key.
I'm just chuckling because I know exactly where you're coming from.
Talking about the keyboard warriors, I think.
We're all thinking that.
Everybody's okay with two from your district and one alternate? So, Mr. Bickner, we've got a little ground to make.
There you go.
Everybody you're okay with?
Two from our district plus one alternate.
Right.
And so, I guess, do we, do we absolutely have to have this committee in place by the March?
No.
So, if we were to do an application process and we had the committee in effect, you know, as of April, push it out a month, I mean, how we'd be spending would be done?
I don't see March as being, I was looking at February. I don't see March as being a prohibitive timeframe. I still think you could do things, almost everything could be completed, all of it could be completed.
Keep in mind, we're at the holiday season and if we put together an application and, and try to get it on the December meeting and have it posted for three or four weeks, people are at the holidays, they're not paying attention to that.
No, we're not talking, no, if I, I understood you to say that we need to start the policy.
I was gonna just say that very thing. The policy is what I'm concerned about by February 4th. That way, the policy's in place and you've got a framework within which.
I thought you wanted to go forward with the whole, have a committee in place by March, okay.
And then we would have 28, we would need 28 days prior to the February 4th meeting.
It has to be in the clay today, on the streets, 28 days ahead.
And that's the policy.
Policy, okay.
Not the, not.
Not the procedure.
So, so what we're doing now is.
Everything else will be based on your standard, submitted this day, it's on the agenda, pass on the agenda. This is the public area for policy because it's a rulemaking.
So, a direction to you at this state would be that please review the policies, if there are said policies, St. John's County, Alachua, Brevard, Putnam.
Putnam has all of them.
There you go. Where, whoever had, well, do they have the Habsin sales tax a lot?
Yeah, it has to be one that is dealing with the sales tax.
It has to be somebody who's got the same. And a lot of the counties in this state have gone through the Habsin sales taxes here.
I have a question. Do you guys want to allow the superintendent's office to appoint anybody to the board or do you want to keep that strictly to the board?
It doesn't matter to me at all if you'd like to have a.
Generally, the superintendent would appoint the same number as a board member would appoint when you've done committees in the past, so I don't.
So, do we include the superintendent?
I'm good with whatever the board would like for me to do. Well, to that end, there's one other thing I was gonna suggest. There is some value in having some people that are from CCUA and Clay Electric and all of those things. These people that were put out here, the value of those is, is they understand what a capital project is, number one. And number two, if their name is on that same list of people that is sending something out to the public, I think there's credibility that's been added to the process. And so, that's one more consideration. Yes, we like people from Clay Hill, we like people from Keystone, we like people from Argyle, we like people from everywhere, but at the same time, credibility is what you're ultimately trying to get. An honest report that people will believe. It doesn't matter if it's an honest report, if nobody thinks, if everybody thinks it's political or motivating. I mean, if we haven't learned anything in the last 40 years, we should have learned that. It doesn't matter what it says if people don't think you're lying. So, that's one more thing is, we can get, just, it's a thought, that those people add some credibility to an already suspect system.
Where do you draw the line, like the list that Bryce gave us? How many were on that list, seven? And then, you know, we're, we're doing two each of an alternative, that's, that's a lot of people.
No, but this included, this included, this included CCUA, this included superintendent appointment, board chair, counting, appointees.
And there's like a tendency that a school board member could make one of those appointments. I'd be happy to give up one of my appointments to one of those or anything.
Now, you're talking 10 and if you allow the superintendent to, now you're talking 12. So, if four of those people somehow are part of some list similar to this, then I think that it's changed the complexion of the committee so that it has a little bit more credibility and also more knowledge as to where capital projects actually are. I mean, I work with CCUA, Mr. Fassa works with CCUA, Bryce works with CCUA. If they don't know what a capital project is, you know, and everybody that's with CCUA is very, and I'm not using them specifically, other than for an example, they understand the process because they have to make that same accounting to their shareholders and the people that work that they're financed by.
Well, I'm looking at like the Florida Economic Development. If one of the citizens from that particular organization happens to live in my district and I ask a person, or they, they want to.
Far is I have two plus an alternate for five board members. I don't know what to do with.
And the superintendent. I agree with the superintendent. And yours can be enlarged.
So, that's, now, I've got conflicts, I've got language that I'll put in on conflict. The terms, I don't have a term.
I like.
And the people that work that they're financed by.
Well, I'm looking at like the Florida Economic Development. If one of the citizens from that particular organization happens to live in my district and I ask a person, or they, they want to step up and they list that as their profession, I mean, I would assume that as we're publishing the list of members of this committee, that their professions are going to be listed as well.
I would think so.
And we do want a combination of doctors and lawyers and everybody.
Keep the lawyer.
Keep the lawyers on that.
Oh, sorry. They could be all the, right. But nice lawyers, no.
So, what I have so far is I have two plus an alternate for five board members. I don't know what to do with superintendent.
And the superintendent, I agree with the superintendent. And yours can be enlarged.
So, that's true. Now, I've got conflicts, I've got language that I'll put in on conflict. The term, I don't have a term.
I like, and when we hire, or when we hire, when we ask these people to serve, one can be a two, let's say a three-year person, one can be a two-year person and they will swap, I mean, then we'll get into it every two after that first year, you were saying?
Well, what I was thinking is, is that's why I said two years because if you have a two-year rotation, then you start off with people that, say, you start off with 16 people. At the end of one year, half of those people fade away.
Correct.
Or they can be reappointed. At the end of the next year, the other half fades away and now you're on a two-year rotation. It's harder to do with three years.
Well, I was thinking first, that first initial meeting, if we say a two-year rotation, then everybody's on two years. That's why I was trying to avoid that.
Well, why don't we, if we're each picking two people, pick one for one year and one for two year and then after that, everybody's two year.
And after that, once they're appointed, it's two years. Does that work? Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so I'm gonna put in a two year.
You see, I was thinking the two to three for the same reason.
Yeah.
Meeting.
And you could do that too, three years.
It may end up being that because the first person may say, "We only have two meetings, let's keep going."
I have meetings as quarterly?
Yes.
Presentations by the staff, so whatever's necessary to be presented.
We do need to have somebody be in charge of the Oversight Committee from someone from probably Bryce's.
Well, I was just gonna connect to ex officio participants that, that are involved in presentation of an organization but not involved with the outcome.
And does it need to say, "Appointed by the superintendent?" Appointed by the superintendent? Is that how the policy should read? Yeah, I think it should say.
For the person that's.
Appointed by the, you know, the superintendent or his designee type of thing.
Terry just wanted to add that to it.
Somebody other than Terry Denver. I found the doc application by the way.
I've heard from Terry's family that she has way too much time at home and she needs another duty.
Okay, Terry, you're in. Okay, I don't want to throw, like you mentioned here, but it's 10:29, is our special meeting time sensitive? Do we need to stop or can we keep going?
It just has to be after 10:30.
Anything else that?
It just has to be after.
Should be something in there about a quorum.
Right, well, Robert's rules is what I was gonna put.
Yeah, so if you put, follow Robert's rules.
Robert's rules for small boards, which is very loose.
So, one of the ones that I read said that they do nominate a chair and a vice chair to facilitate the meeting.
That's organizational thing.
Right.
And they have to be a Clay County citizen according to what I think.
And then does the policy need to say something about the, as it is in the resolution, that they will monitor and oversee?
That's what I was gonna put is, is, I'm going to follow what the resolution specifically said. I may expand on it a little bit, but it's gonna be, I am confined with that. I can't say beyond that.
Since this is a workshop, can Smithy ask a question? I know he came because he was interested in this committee.
Yes, do you have any questions, Mr. Huffman?
Well, you, you kind of answered them. I just, you know, I sent everybody a, hopefully a respectful email. You know, a lot of the concerns is the people that supported this, myself included, was that there was representation throughout the entire county because that was kind of inferred at the informational meetings that there would be fair representation throughout the county. And especially from the Keystone, Middleburg, Clay Hill area, there were some concerns from citizens that they did have that representation. And my, my biggest fear is, like Mr. Bickner said, was you want to, your parents of, or you don't, you want transparency and you want the people that first of all supported the Habsin sales tax and the ones that didn't support it to understand that this is only spent on capital outlay. And to have that representation will, will kind of eliminate that doubt by the community and I think it might give the community a better feeling about the whole process.
I think a lot of the people that did oppose it though told me it was because of the 30-year term and I was really, you know.
I mean, there was a variety of reasons why they, they opposed it. But, you know, it's, it's a done deal now. So. So, so at least, at least they'll feel confident, you know, there were all kinds of rumors that, oh, this is gonna be spent on teacher salaries, well, that ain't happening.
But it can, that's just that chance.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, but they, but there were people out there spreading those rumors.
Absolutely.
You know, so-
Communication's the key.
Yeah, so, again, an open communication and a transparency to the community for the people that supported it or didn't support it.
Right.
It will, it will help the overall image of the school system, and it's like you presented the fact that you can give them the truth, but if they don't understand that it's true, then it doesn't do any good, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Bickner?
I think I'm good. If I, if I need another workshop, I will ask.
Okay.
But I'm good so far, thank you.
And if we did another workshop, I'm just, just an if, would we need to do it in December, or could we do it in early January since our meeting isn't until?
I prefer to do it in December because I think we're going to have to send something for advertising before the end of December.
I mean, we have next agenda-
We start burning some real-time crunches in December because of Christmas.
Right.
She has to have it on the streets twenty-eight days ahead of time. No, to do that, it comes out on a Thursday, they have to have it in their hands on the Monday before that Thursday.
We have a next-
I'm sorry.
Sorry, go.
I was just going to let you know that that date would be January fourth.
Oh, that's two, yeah.
That's the problem with our meeting.
Yes, yes. We have another agenda workshop coming up on December fifteenth.
That might be, I might believe what I have been in.
So if we needed to do another follow-up to that, we could do a workshop at that point.
Well, if, if we have to take action, it has to be a special meeting.
It does.
It can't be workshops.
And it has to be-
So it has to be advertised as a second meeting, special meeting.
Exactly.
And we have enough time for that at this stage?
And so I would not be able to advert, I would not be able to send out another ad until the seventh, that would not be published until the tenth, so-
And that's not enough time.
So really, the seventeenth would be the earliest we could hold up.
So you know, there's your seventeenth.
Approval?
I thought, special meetings had different rules, isn't it a forty-eight hour?
We could do a forty-eight hour.
If we do the special meeting, you do the forty-eight hour.
Yeah, okay.
There has to be, I would need to look at it and see what, and make sure that we meet the requirements.
Yeah, I don't know if we actually meet the requirements because it's not considered an emergency.
An emergency.
With the special meeting to have the forty-eight hours or-
There are rules.
Yeah. Creating a committee or a policy for committee, I don't think really falls under that.
No, that's not an emergency, but I was thinking it was just special meetings had,